Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, November 29th, 2016 meeting of the Long Meadow School Committee. This meeting is called to order. This meeting is being recorded and aired live by LCTV. It is also being livestreamed on longmeadow.org. It is a legal requirement for anyone else to disclose if they are recording this meeting. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Oh, can we turn it off? What's that for?
A couple of reports early on.
All right, let's just turn it off.
Can you guys mute the -- so would you mute the projector just until --
Yes.
Until that comes up?
For correspondence this week, we have an email letter from Mr. Doug Roberts of J.C.J. Architects dated November 17th, 2016, as a follow-up from their visit with the school committee on November 15th, 2016.
So if I could just comment, basically what the email states is I had asked some questions at their last meeting of J.C.J. about the report they submitted, because they did a townwide report. So my question was, was there other buildings that were similar in condition to the middle schools? So the middle schools, they had indicated that they were basically past their useful life and that we either needed to substantially renovate or replace. So the other two buildings that they, after they went back and looked at the study, that were confirmed to have building systems that were at or near the end of their useful life were Greenwood Center and Stores Library.
Yes.
The repair replacement costs in 2008 for Greenwood were 1.8 million and Stores Library was 1.4 million estimated. In addition, the community house was in need of upgrades to the fire alarm system, exterior doors and windows. They estimated that cost is around $1,616,000. The other 10 facilities were observed to be in good condition. So basically, what I was looking for is whether we had a lot of buildings in town that were kind of at this point, and it appears based on what they sent us that really the two middle schools are the two buildings that were complete, needed to be completely overhauled or replaced. And it looks like for some much lower number, we could deal with Greenwood and Stores and potentially the community house.
Wait, was the DPW in the study?
Yeah. Was the DPW one of the other 10?
Yeah, that's what I'm wondering.
They didn't specifically list it. I mean, I know the DPW, the garage space, just from driving by it, you could see it's falling apart. The office space is probably a different story, and that's kind of what you hear around town, is the question between those two pieces of the buildings down there.
Would you --
But we could ask them specifically.
Yeah, would you mind following up with them on that question?
What --
John?
-- what the other 10 facilities were.
Yeah.
Are they really small?
Well, the report itself --
Or not expensive?
The report itself is on the town's website, so we can check out the report directly ourselves and take a look, which I'll do.
I know Ty and Bond have done an engineering study of the DPW facility several years ago. I don't know if they did it again this time because there was an existing study that had already taken place. Can I update them?
Okay, anything else under correspondence for this week? Next, we have approval of the minutes. We need a motion for approval.
I move that the school committee approve the minutes to the November 15th, 2016 school committee meeting as presented.
Any discussion or questions about the minutes?
Second.
Oh, sorry. Anything on the minutes this week? Okay, all those in favor? Opposed and abstaining?
No, I should -- I didn't vote. Can I be recorded in the affirmative? Thank you.
Next, we have visitor comments. Do we have any visitor comments tonight? Sure? All right. Next, we have school committee announcements and recognitions. Any school committee announcements this evening? Or, Michelle, you're welcome to make any announcements.
Yeah, so starting from today, I have all the principals from both Williams and Glenbrook sent me emails, and it looks like they corresponded with their student council at both schools. And they -- I got sent an email that listed all the activities that had just happened, so I wanted to share that with you. From Williams, from the student council notes, I'm going to read it exactly as they've written because I feel like they've done a really good job and I don't want to miss anything. So the student council notes from Williams read, "Williams Middle School hosted a successful food drive for the Long Meadow Open Pantry. The school donated over 255 pounds of food to local families in need. Their next school-wide activity will be for PJs for TJ. Students and staff will wear their pajamas and other attire to school on December 16th and donate to help our furry friends, their furry friends at Thomas J. O'Connor Animal Shelter. Williams Middle School students will be participating in the annual Hour of Code that starts December 5th. They hope to have every student complete at least one hour of code before the end of the week." And their principal also sent notes along with that. "The eighth grade student Megan Disraziers was selected as the Long Meadow Ambassador for Project 351. Project 351 is a volunteer organization that was created by Governor Patrick. The goal of Project 351 is to unite eighth grade ambassadors from every city and town in the Commonwealth for an inspirational year of community service leadership development enrichment. Mr. Sullivan's eighth grade U.S. history class did a fantastic job with a mock debate of the Constitutional Convention. After all their hard work, the students were able to pull off the popular mannequin challenge with the Constitutional Convention twist." And they also sent me a copy of that video. And from Glenbrook, this is what I received. "The Glenbrook Maker Space, the Maker Space at Glenbrook is being used by teachers in various classes. For example, the eighth grade music technology elective class began a project to design a surround sound system in the music room. One of the components of the project was for students to understand how to solder two wires together. This is a skill that is commonly used in electronics and in music technology applications. Students were able to solder a connection by using soldering iron, solder working tables, and space provided by the Maker Space. Seventh grade social studies and art interdisciplinary project. Mr. Griffin, their art teacher, and Mr. Wells, their seventh grade social studies teacher, worked collaboratively on an interdisciplinary project this trimester. Students were assigned a section of the world map and asked to recreate that square utilizing collage techniques learned in their art classes. They had to accurately represent the colors found on the maps using only three magazines that were assigned. After completing the piece, each student titled it after one of the magazine articles that contributed to their work. In their social studies class, students were given three to five minutes to teach Mr. Wells something about their part of the world map section. Next week, the collage map will be reassembled and displayed in the CIA hallway alongside quotes from each student about their part world." And the last note they sent me was about their breast cancer awareness fundraiser. "Students at Glenbrook participated in Breast Cancer Awareness Week the last full week in October. Students made baked goods to sell at parent-teacher conferences and bought pins, bracelets, hacky sack balls, and hair ribbons at lunches before school to show their support for breast cancer awareness. The week ended with Wear Pink Day, and students did an amazing job donating money and showing their pink spirit. Thanks to the generosity of students, parents, and teachers, they raised a grand total of $1,274, which is extremely impressive. The money will be split in half. $637 will be donated to the National Breast Cancer Foundation, and $637 will be given to the Breast Cancer Research Foundation. And the student council is sponsoring a Glow in the Dark Dance next week to raise money for the Gray House in Shriners." And for Long Meadow High School, I don't have anything new. We did have an S.FAC meeting, which is a Student Faculty Advisory Committee meeting, and we got to hear from all of the classes except the senior class because they just had their senior class play, which was a hit. And so right now, the freshman class just had an apparel sale, which they're raising money for their class since they just came in and they didn't have any money in their account. And the sophomore class had just had their semi, which Mr. Dunkley had said had run very smoothly and was definitely amazing in every aspect. And they're right now working for, on their semi-formal, which will be in March, I believe. And the junior class is currently working on organizing this junior-senior dance, which is in January.
Great. Thanks for covering all that for us.
Yep, no problem.
Does anyone have any questions for Michelle? That reminded me that I, my announcement is that I attended my 25-year Long Meadow High School reunion on Saturday night. It was fun. It was really good to see people. And nice that we had the money in our account, hopefully to cover some of it, anyway. Anything else? Michael?
Just wanted to wish the girls' field hockey team a real congratulations on their success. You know, obviously, I'm sure everybody's a little disappointed we didn't win the ultimate state finals, but I mean, again, year after year, always ending in the semifinals, always ending the finals. It's, you know, a really tremendous team and a really good effort on their part, so congratulations to them.
That's great, thank you. Next, we have Jean Fontaine is here to share her annual pupil services director report.
That's a nice theme you used.
Do we all have copies of it? Should I, do you want me to project it also?
Yeah.
So I don't know if you three want to move, so I think it's clear on camera, maybe.
20 seconds.
That's, yeah.
Yeah.
Sorry.
So basically, I've pulled together, I think you've probably reviewed it, but just some numbers and trends and kind of looking at data and giving you a little update of what's going on pre-K to 22. And we'll just, you know, feel free to ask questions as we're going through. So the first slide, whoop, just jumped. Sorry for me. So I'm starting with the current enrollment over time, so I went back to 2012. You can see the total student enrollment for the district, you know, with some slight changes, and then students with disabilities at the bottom also had a little fluctuation, but it's pretty much staying pretty steady with our enrollment, no major changes. So currently, we have 541 students in special education. So if you look at that as far as percentages, we have 18.4% of our student body is on an IEP or a student with a disability. This is actually just IEP students, it does not include 504 students. So if you look at surrounding towns, other members of the collaborative, West Springfield, Southwick, and East Long Meadow are higher than us, and then the state average is 17.4, so we're slightly above state average. And then Agawam, Ludlow, and Hampton-Wilberham are below us and below the state average. So we're --
Would you mind just explaining the difference between IEP and 504?
So an IEP is a student who has a disability and is in need of specialized instruction. So, you know, they need something different than the regular curriculum. A student on a 504 plan is also a student with a disability, but they just need accommodation. So that's the major difference between an IEP and a 504.
Thank you. Sorry to interrupt you.
No, that's okay.
But the 504 is typically not a learning disability, it's a typically a physical disability.
It's more health is probably our largest category of students on 504 plans. It would be --
And behavioral or?
No, it would be more of a, behavior's not a disability. So for a 504 disability, the biggest category is health. It would be students with epilepsy, could be ADHD, anything that's a health impairment, or typically 504s, but there's variation, obviously.
Okay.
So this, what we're talking about tonight are students that are identified for special education. This does not include 504. So our referral rates, I just went back the last two years. So staff referrals, in 2014-15, we had 90 students that were referred for an evaluation through special education and initial evaluation. And last school year, that decreased, so we went down to only 75 referrals by staff. And again, that's pre-K through high school. Parent referrals, two years ago, we had 60 parents that referred their students for evaluations, and that has dramatically decreased, down to 36 parents that referred their students for evaluations last year. So overall, we've had a nice reduction in students being referred for evaluation.
Can I ask a question about that? What do you attribute that to? Is it simply that we're doing a better job of catching kids early, or is it --
Yeah, I really do think that's what it is. I think all of the interventions that we're doing in the RTI process, response to intervention, regular ed initiatives that we've put in place in the elementary, middle, and high school, that kids are getting services. So I think parents are feeling that kids are supported through those regular ed supports. So I think less parents are referring because they're feeling comfortable their kids are getting help, and I think that's the same with teachers.
My only other question is, did you see a decrease in referrals from both staff and parents in the 13, 14 school year?
A decrease?
Yeah.
Probably not. I can get that data, but I don't think so.
It's not super important, it's not really trending or directing.
I don't think it was higher than -- We can get you.
It's fine, it's not a huge deal.
Yeah. Okay, so if you take our, what was it, 541 students, and you break them down by the disability categories, you look at the first three, health, communication, and specific learning disabilities are majority of our students. And then if you look at the lower incidence categories of neurological, autism, developmental delay, emotional, intellectual disabilities, multiple disabilities, sensory and physical. And this is just on primary. Some kids have more than one disability going, but this would be the primary disability that we're talking about when we're categorizing kids. Any questions there? So then if you look at our kids, if we take out the preschool, so I have our 541 students, and we take out our preschool kiddos and itinerants, those kids that just come in for services, that might be attending a private preschool but may need speech and language or OT, we have 498 kids, and they break down where the majority of our kids are in full inclusion. So they are attending all regular ed classes, they might have some support services, but all of their core academics are in the general ed classroom. Our partial inclusion is our next biggest category, and those are our in-district programming are the majority of those kids. And then we do have some kids that are in substantially separate programs at the middle and high school, and those kids have most of their academics being taught by a special educator. And then you look at our, you know, our students, the rest are pretty much our out-of-district students. So we have 20 students in private day programs, special ed private schools, 12 residential and three students who are homebound. So when you look at the disability categories of our residential placements, 75% of those students have autism. And then our private day placement, 55% of those students have autism and 35% have emotional disabilities. So the majority of our kids that, you know, we can't service in district fall into those two categories.
What's an example of an emotional disability?
Could be bipolar, just --
Something like that.
Yeah, anxiety, severe depression.
Got it.
Okay, so trends. So looking at those numbers, these are things that I kind of pulled out. So I think one thing we're seeing with our reduction in referrals is that the interventions and the supports that we put into regular ed are starting to pay off, where kids are getting services earlier and we're not, you know, everyone's not coming for just special education. This is, this second point here is a big one for me, having been supervising the LLC program at Williams for the past 10 years. We currently have no students outplaced in a day program for a specific learning disability. So kids with dyslexia are all being serviced in district, and we currently have no students placed at Curtis Blake or White Oak School. And I think that's the first time in the 16 years that I've been here that we've not had any kids out in those schools. So I think our staff has been doing a great job really meeting the needs of kids in districts, so that's awesome.
That's terrific, yeah.
So the next point, our students with autism and social-emotional disabilities are our highest rate of outplacements, and typically those are more challenging profiles there. This is kind of a sad trend, but our preschool reported that they're starting to see students actually being referred to us through early intervention that are already being diagnosed with emotional disabilities, which typically you would see kids that young being labeled as developmental delay, where we're going to kind of wait and see and figure it out, but they're actually coming through with diagnoses of bipolar and severe anxiety and other emotional disabilities that young, so.
They're diagnosing bipolar at the preschool level?
They are starting to, yes, like a preliminary diagnosis, so. So that was reported from the preschool this year. That was something for us to kind of look out, kind of just keep in mind. So services in district, our preschool, you know, we have a full preschool program, and then we have students that come in just for the itinerant services. Our other in-district partial inclusion programs are Links Program, which is at Wolf Swamp, for students with autism, and that's an inclusion program. Our language learning disabilities program, so those are students with specific learning disabilities, and that is at Blueberry and Williams. Our LLC program, which is our Long Meadow Learning Center, is at Center School and Glenbrook, and that is for students that are requiring repeated practice, a slower pace, and an individualized curriculum. Our PALS program is at Wolf Swamp and Glenbrook, and these are kids that have language, academic, and some social skills issues that they're working on. And then at the high school, we have our life skills program, which is for students who are not on a college track and are not, typically are not on a diploma track as well.
We did have a number of students receive their diplomas from that program, though, right? Last year?
They may have got certificates, I would guess.
Okay. I just know that there's some sort of recognition at graduate.
Oh, absolutely, yes.
Definitely, yeah. So they may, they would get a certificate of attendance.
Got it.
So our integrated preschool, I don't know how much you know about that, but we start taking kids in when they're two years, nine months old. They can start coming to preschool. We currently are serving 45 students in the integrated preschool, and 16 of them are in special education. We have a very strong ABA component, and that's Applied Behavioral Analysis, so that's a teaching strategy for students with autism. And we have actually a room and staff dedicated to giving students that intense instruction in the preschool. We have a very strong partnership with the private preschools in town, and I was really not aware of that until last year. I went to a meeting with Catherine Beavis, our preschool coordinator, and I cannot remember the woman's name, from early childhood from Department of Ed. And during her interview with Catherine, she was asking about, "When did you ever go to the private preschools?" And Catherine actually does do that. So our preschool staff does reach out to private preschools in town to help them with behavior, to do observations of students, to give them feedback, to set up behavior programs for them, and just consult to them. And these are students who maybe parents need them in a full-day program, so they're not ready to come to public school yet, but they're going to come eventually. So it's definitely worth it, and just wanted to note that the state was pretty impressed with that as really being something that they want to see happening, you know, across the state. And we're already doing that, so that's awesome. Elementary, I already talked about our different partial inclusion programs. So they basically are servicing kids either 2 to 5, 3 to 5, or K to 5. These are students who are in a regular ed classroom as well, but they may be coming out to a specialized program for instruction to meet their needs. So we have a range of different programming at the elementary level. It continues at the middle school level for some of the programming. What drops off is that Links Program, so the students with autism who are included. You know, at this point, by middle school, if they're still fully included, they're actually working in a regular resource room, which is an inclusion program, so they wouldn't need a pull-out at that point. Our high school, we have the life skills program. We have five students in there this year. They've really become quite a part of Long Meadow High School. They're integrated the best they can with staff and students, so they do access some regular ed classes when they can and when it's appropriate. One of the highlights is cooking with Coach Nick St. George. He cooks with the students, I think, monthly, and that's a big hit. All of the students have an LHS mentor, which gets the kids more integrated in, and I don't know if anyone's gone to their monthly café. They host a café once a month on a Friday morning. The December one is the Ugly Sweater Café, so that's coming up soon, and it's a big hit. It's amazing how many general ed students are going into that classroom and being part of what's going on in there, so it's really neat. Some of their community outings, they have a partnership with AW Brown, they go to the fire department, Jewish geriatrics, so they have some weekly outings that they're going to. I think they also have a partnership with Bay Path, and they do some pre-vocational work opportunities in those settings, so that's been going great. So our transition grant, we had given, I think I sent you information earlier in the school year about a grant opportunity that we had, and we did get the grant funding for this, so we're starting training. So this transition is really talking about students 18 to 22, and transitioning them to adult services, adult life, career. So the training is actually starting next Monday, and that's with the special ed supervisors. And then the training will continue in March with our special education teachers in grades seven through 12. So really helping develop a good plan for the student, to be looking at that plan. And then the goal is to be developing programming in district for students 18 to 22 and a partnership and better career and vocational opportunities in their community. So that's the goal of that grant, and we're pretty excited to try to give our kids a better, you know, the best outcome that we can before they transition to adult services.
Is that the one that you had secured? Okay, yeah, just this year. That's great.
And other professional development opportunities, we continue to train teachers in Orton-Gillingham, which is a specialized approach to teaching reading. We have three more teachers being trained this year. Also, three, two other programs that are excellent programs is Seeing Stars and Visualizing and Verbalizing. And we were able to send an elementary resource teacher from each building to get trained in seeing stars and visualizing and verbalizing. So we would hope to be able to continue that next year and just kind of increase the tools available to them to meet students' needs. In the spring, we're also looking to maybe send some teaching pairs, a special ed teacher with a general ed partner, to try to look at some co-teaching opportunities. So that would be coming up in the spring.
What is Seeing Stars about?
It's a phonics-based program, so it's decoding, reading, phonics.
So why stars?
I have no idea why it's named that. But staff -- I have no idea why it's, why it's named that. But staff that just went to the training are already using it. One of the teachers at Blueberry, and she loves it. So, there you go. So, that's it. Any questions?
I have all mine.
Stephanie. Do you have a roundabout number of how many 18 to 22-year-olds we support either in district or out of district?
Yeah. I don't, no, I don't want to take a guess at that, but I can get that.
Okay. Thank you so much. Really appreciate it. Thank you. Your presentation and your handout, very clear, very easy to understand. Thank you.
You knew I should have gone first. Next on deck.
I'll think the anti on the PowerPoints these days. I don't know.
Sue, Bertrand.
So, I feel like I've been reporting a lot lately. So, if you're sick of seeing me, I get that. But this is just a quick update on curriculum and learning and what we're doing. Some of the things that we're doing, actually. I just wanted to tell you a little bit about our PD this year. We have four full days during the school year, and we have two half-days as well. And those half-days took the place of the early release days that we've had the past few years that didn't seem to be getting us much traction. So, we moved to two half-days this year, and so far, the feedback has been good. We have many professional growth courses. Those are courses after school for the most part, online sometimes. Sometimes they're brick and click, half and half. They're taught by teachers, for teachers. They're, they're really exceptional. We have professional learning communities going on. Right now, we have an elementary math PLC for grades K through five, and that meets weekly at the elementary schools they rotate through. We have high-quality teacher shares, which is almost like a lesson study or a book study. They, they pull apart some topic that they do research on and share ideas. Folks go to conferences and workshops, and our literacy coaches in the elementary school are doing just a great job this year of getting into classrooms and looking at literacy with teachers. And so, I don't want to skip that part of PD. This is my first attempt at a Wordle. Just to give you an idea, I think there are some groups that are left off, but these are all the folks that we plan professional development for on a regular basis. And so, you can see it's a wide range of folks, and trying to find someone that works well for everybody is sometimes tough, but it's like we're definitely getting better at it. The first group we started to train this year are administrators. They're a rangy bunch, but this is the challenge course at the high school. I believe they were a leave grant to get some of this equipment. And as administrators, we all went almost willingly to, to try out their new equipment. And we learned about team building, and we had learned about other learning styles and collaboration. And I think our biggest takeaway was that we all just want to jump in there and solve the problem, get it done. And, yeah, it took us a little while to get some of the things done. That's Dr. O'Shea on the A-frame in the middle. We had to move him, what, like 30 feet?
Yep.
Just using ropes?
And I will note, they, they moved me successfully for about 20 yards, and then they dropped me. I told them, the first, the reeder hawk or the PE teacher was walking us through the chorus, told me that I was the first person that any group had ever dropped on the A-frame, so.
There is no photographic evidence on that, so.
She was going to skip over that.
I'm not sure what they had.
But maybe if school committee wants to try this sometime, it's really, we really had a great time, and we did, we learned a lot. And the students are going to have a great time on that. That one in the top left, we're trying to balance, it's called a whale watch. It's really a giant seesaw. And the fulcrum is there.
Tom looks really intent on that.
Yeah, yeah. And every person there was giving advice. So, that was, that was the problem. This is just a sampling of what we have done or in store for PD elementary schools. Got, had a FOS science introduction from the science committee. They're digging deeper into literacy using multiple text sets. They've had social emotional training at Blueberry Hills School. They had a big full-day PD on the power and importance of mathematical reasoning. Like 70 or 80, 80, I think, staff members sat in the high school auditorium cafeteria and worked on, hands-on math all day long. So, it was a long day, and they learned a lot. Middle school has done a lot of team building. They've practiced with their Makerspace. They explored what MCAS 2.0 might look like. They've done some middle and high school collaboration and are looking to do middle and elementary collaboration. The pictures here are the Glenbrook principal and vice principal teaching about how important movement is in the classroom. So, we happened to stumble upon them learning about that and just some good sports down the left-hand corner. Taking a quick break. The high school did TINA training. That's our new special education program. They had training. This is just a small sampling. Classroom management, executive functioning, and strateging, strategies for engaging students were on their list of PD topics they could choose from. We rarely do this, but this year, we actually had two district-wide PDs. We had legal issues in education early on. August 24th, our attorney came in and gave everybody an overview of kind of current issues and confidentiality, and talked about 504 some and IEPs. And I think that was great for everybody to hear. And then we have one coming up that I think is going to be awesome, The Effects of Anxiety in Students by Lynn Lyons. I think she spoke to parents last year in the evening, and then I went to a workshop and saw her, and she's phenomenal. So, she'll drive home The Effects of Anxiety in Students. That's a half a day in the afternoon. Actually, she's coming for the whole day, and she'll meet with some other groups in the morning, our social workers, our counselors, our psychologists. Then we try to do what we can to specialize our PD, to meet people where they are. And so, our PE teachers have been working at middle school at least on TRX and movement training. Those are the suspended trainers that we have. We've got a lot here at the high school and the elementary, I mean, the middle schools acquire a few. So, they're trying to use those in their PE classes. They went to a workshop on non-traditional playground activities. And they've got CPR and first aid coming up, and they had, they actually had a team building session too, and they really loved it. Our, our teachers, I think almost all of them, except the high school teachers, signed up for the Museum of Modern Art webinars that they've been taking online. And then they had a chance to go to Westfield State class, Elements and Principles of Art Through Design Process on our last full PD day. And then we actually hosted that at Glenbrook. I don't want to read all this to you. Music, there was a Westfield State course there too. The nurses have had CPR and pharmacy so far, and Jean, you probably know more about what they're doing than I, but they always have stuff planned with people in the community. And then the counselors and psychologists and tutors and speech paths and many others went to a workshop that was awesome, working with ELL, Language Delayed Students. That's a two-day workshop, so the next session is coming up. But we got really great feedback about that particular workshop. So, those are all the folks who didn't have to take the retail, the SEI course, the ELL course. That was, Department of Ed requires teachers to take, regular teachers, core teachers. We do annual trainings and policy reviews, including some of them are the bullying prevention, confidentiality, civil rights. We have a PowerPoint on recognizing and handling allergic reactions and other traumatic health emergencies. Every year, we watch a riveting video on de-escalation and restraint, and talk about social media and electronic communications. And I think Diane added another one for next year, right? So, we have several of those that we have to get folks to sign up on. So, I'm going to switch topics to the curriculum review cycle a little bit. It, it kind of is all over the place, and we need to start prioritizing that a little bit better. So, that's one of my goals at least this year, is to take a look at our cycle and maybe trying to get it in a little bit better order or more fair order or logical order, I guess, especially since I would like to have a budget line item for curriculum in the budget. So, when we think about our cycle, I want us to think about some of these, you know, things. What does our student data tell us about areas where students are meeting with success and are struggling? Is our current curriculum aligned with the frameworks? How old is the text being used? I think somebody had Michael Clark's math book at some point.
Is that true?
That's not that old.
Center School. Elementary.
Just don't help.
We want to think about, are there new frameworks coming out anytime soon? How do our current resources meet our current and future needs? Are we, you know, do we have big gaps that we can fill in? Do we, are they big enough that we need a whole new curriculum? So, and then the, the big one at the end there, what is our budget? What will our budget allow us to replace?
So, I'm excited to hear that you're really looking at this curriculum piece this year. And, you know, I know we've discussed it at the school committee level.
Yeah.
Our goal being to try to make it a line item and to have a, a plan and a projections for a lineup, you know, what needs to come next. And, and then, so that all the departments are prepared to create committees to, you know, start their research early and giving us the information earlier on in the budget season.
So, we know what we're looking at a couple of years out.
Yeah.
You're probably tired of hearing math expressions, but we're in our second full year. Our scores on MCAS at least were, were really great in most cases. ELA is expanding its student response to text all over the place. They're synthesizing text and developing strategies for looking at text on a deeper level. FOS science is in its first year. The, the kids are rotating between schools. As a matter of fact, on December 1st, DBW is going to be really busy moving our FOS kits around, so don't call up for any problems. Teachers are going to box them all up, have them in the front of the schools, and DBW will grab them and kind of just move them clockwise.
So, Sue, can you give us a little update after that happens to let us know how it goes?
Yeah, yeah. I think that's the anticipation of the year. We have a full day of PD from FOS for elementary, but, but folks are diving in and finding if the kits are really easy to use, and the kids are really liking them. What, what we need to consider for next year? I'll let you know after they move the first time through.
Right.
I mean, I think the preference would not, would not be to have to pack everything up and, and shift it around.
Right.
But it definitely is going to require some studies. So, we'll get that committee back together again and talk about ways to improve and things like that. And I think they're even figuring out ways to improve from this trimester to the next trimester. High School Foreign Language started its initial discussion on a curriculum, and they're looking at some of those guidelines that, that we gave them earlier, you know, how old is their curriculum, how relevant is it, what's changed? Do they really have some gaps they can fill in? So, they've kind of started that discussion. We have, like, as you know, we tried to get a health teacher in elementary last year, and we actually were able to infuse a few health lessons on drug safety and prevention into third through fifth grade. The school nurse at some schools will be doing it. The adjustment counselor will be doing some of that. So, it, it, they're just small lessons. And then we have Tar Wars that Western New England comes in as at fifth grade on tobacco prevention. And then the mass history and social science frameworks are under review. Probably won't have new ones out for a couple of years, but the committee is like just starting to meet in January of this year. So, that'll probably be a very long process. Other things that are going on, Shelley Warren and I are writing a youth opioid prevention grant that the Attorney General's Office is offering between maybe $2,500 and $20,000. They're saying the grant recipients will get, if, if we get it, we're really writing that grant to get some drug prevention stuff happening in the elementary, three, third through five. So, we'll let you know. We hope we get that. If, if that works out, it'll be fantastic. It will be a way to reach our students where we need them. Our elementary standards-based report card committee, this is a great group of people. They are diving into this really, really hard, rigorous work. They're developing, you know, rubrics to measure standards. It's, and they're revising the ELA and math portion of the report card for the first trimester of the 17, 18 school year. That's our goal, hopefully. But I think the work is really deeper than anybody even expected. Some of it's on the board up there if we want to look at it later. We have our wellness team. I dubbed it the W Team, and it's a great group of people, classroom teachers, counselors, adjustment counselors, administrators, the school committee liaison, Liz, she's not here tonight. But we're going to, I think, have a really great time exploring non-academic indicators of success that we're hearing about so much these days. And so, I'm looking forward to looking at some of that stuff. And talking about those non-academic indicators of success, I just wanted to show you, like, all the research points to happy kids are happy adults. And so, we do our best to make kids happy. On the left, you can see this was Halloween, and all the elementary schools have a pretty big afternoon Halloween get-together. But this is Wolf Swamp, and all the staff dressed up as superheroes. I think Center might have been superheroes too this year. And Center School had a coat drive for their sister school, Brookings, I think it is, where they donated tons of coats, and they had a food drive also. It's a couple of things that kids can do or are doing for community service. And then the last thing is this really cool Girls on the Run. I happened to be able to catch them on their practice 5K run. But all three elementary schools have just joined Girls on the Run, and it's a 10-week program where faculty volunteer to be coaches, and they coach these young girls. And at the end of the 10 weeks, they're ready to run a 5K. And the kids are crazy about it. They're enthusiastic, and it's a real big confidence builder for a little kid to be able to run a 5K with success. And you can, you know, this is just a practice run. Look at their faces. This is great. So, a lot of nice stuff happening out there, non-academic. The end.
Thank you.
Isn't that cool?
Yeah. Any questions?
Sue.
That's great.
Russ.
So, I'd agree with you. I'd like to budget money for curriculum since we're in public school. It makes sense. But based on what we're talking to the town about for monies.
I know.
I don't know. I mean, we're not so far looking at a number that even covers what we do today. So, I guess when we get to budget season, which is coming right up, we'll have to talk with you and also with you about how can we be efficient to maybe, maybe make something like that happen. But we're starting again at a point where we just, we're coming in way below what we'd actually need just to continue what the program we have today. So, as you know, I mean, it's.
Yeah. Yeah, I know it's going to be a hard sell or, you know.
But I think we need to do it. We need to figure out a way to make it happen, but.
It's tough to come to the end of the year and not know, you know, and try to plan PD for teachers who are going to get stuff over the summer. I mean, it's really, it's tough for them.
Well, we say we want you to have a plan for curriculum, and how do we fund textbooks and all those things. And then we say, by the way, we have no money to do it.
Yeah, you can have a plan, but you're not going to be able to implement it, so.
That's not great, but.
Well, we've done pretty well the last couple of years in getting a lot of great stuff. So, thank you for that, for sure.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Very much. Next, we have administrative reports, the superintendent report.
So, I don't have a written report for you, but I wanted to mention just a couple things quickly. You're aware that Principal Marie Pratt had announced her retirement at the end of the year, and so I suspect in January, we'll start to put together a process to fill Marie's large shoes. We'll be sure to make that an inclusive process and keep parents engaged and involved in that, and, and the staff as well. I want to thank the Long Meadow Police Department has been very active recently in helping us ensure that our schools are, are safe. Two things that are in the works right now, our school resource officer and other members of the department are making their way through the schools to do some, have some conversations with staff on, on our response to unwanted intruders, for lack of a better phrase. And additionally, they are helping us with some bomb threat training, doing some tabletop exercises at the high school in a couple of weeks. And so, that's something we hope to expand to the other schools as well. So, my appreciation to the Long Meadow Police Department for their involvement in that. Putting together a calendar committee. Our first meeting is this week. And finally, a plug for a survey that I had sent home a link on, and it was a survey to help us get some feedback on the development of targets for our district improvement plan. So, that survey is open and available online for anyone who wants to participate. So, that's it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
School Committee Chair Report. We had our joint administrative meeting on Friday, November 18th. If Marty and Tom want to chime in at any point, please do so. We had a general sort of overview discussion. That's very similar to the discussions we've been having with the town about budget and discrepancy and what we need and what we have, and trying to do some projections in terms of, you know, what we know now and then what we won't know until probably the end of January. Let's see. We talked a little bit about, the town is buying, it looks like they're leasing a dump truck, potentially one or two. So, we talked a little bit about leasing versus. the town is buying a, it looks like they're leasing a dump truck, potentially one or two, so we talked a little bit about leasing versus buying. We talked a little bit about DPW and what some of the projected costs would be if we were to, bless you, if we were to, if the town were to go ahead and purchase the Grand Meadows property. Uh I think they were guesstimating somewhere between, I don't want to misquote, um somewhere in the two, three million dollar range at least initially, but there was really no firm figure on that. And.
But a total cost of fifteen to eighteen million, something like that.
Right. Did that, the fifteen to eighteen million, did that include the purchasing of the?
I think it was fifteen million without the purchase and eighteen million approximately with the purchase.
Eighteen, yep. So they are still in negotiations regarding acquiring that land and it sounds like they're just in very early stages, so there wasn't a lot of information there.
Yeah, but the, what's been in the press and everything is that they're probably looking at eminent domain.
Right.
Is what has been published, so. So taking the property.
We also talked a little bit about capitalists and Tom, maybe you can help me out a little on this one, but we had a very large line item in our capital, um in the submission of our capital needs with, regarding technology. So we did have a discussion about how we can create some sort of long-term budgeting process, procedure for our technology needs. Given the fact that it's something we know we need to keep up with, it's critical to education in this era and also we're looking at our standardized tests potentially moving to a computer-based exam, which they're piloting partially this year. So we did have a discussion about that as well. Was there anything else that I left out that you thought was important to mention?
Well, I think the question of DPW middle schools is, I mean, really, what they seem to be saying is that I think the concern is that the school committee would be jumping ahead of the DPW potentially or, you know, we all show up at town meeting and say, well, we don't want the DPW to go first and we essentially, you know, all vote against the DPW or get the townspeople to do so. So there's some, I think there's some question of whether we would agree as a committee to support the DPW and then that type of thing. I have, you know, I raised some issues with that because I think it's one that's not a role. We don't really, I, I think their counter to that though is the DPW is, we're probably the biggest customer of the DPW, so they want our input and I think individually, we probably all said things about the DPW. I know I have and I've, I think I've said publicly a number of times that that's probably the project that does need to go first. But in my mind, the question is how it goes first. Are we spending eighteen million or are we trying to do some type of, you know, garage-only project? I don't know, but um so we had a conversation about that too.
Michael.
I continue to be frustrated by this sort of, this, this sentiment that I'm hearing from our colleagues on the select board about this lack of perceived support. Has anybody on this board ever done anything to demonstrate that we don't support this project? I think we've voted in support of the findings at town meeting as individual voters and I don't know where it's coming from. It's like, I just, it seems to be coming from nowhere. And, you know, every time I hear that someone on the select board or the town manager has said, you know, the school committee is going to try to do a run-around on us at town meeting, I've just, it has never occurred to me that the DPW building would not come first. It has never occurred to me as a voter, as a member of this board, as a citizen, that the project that has been evaluated for two years, that has a standing committee working on developing the project, that has had two separate town meeting votes related to the site of the project, that has had engineering studies and schematic design done on a building, would ever be put in the backseat behind a senior center or middle schools. It just is, I mean, they, they, they're so much closer to the goalpost than we are. We're still talking about, why should we talk about middle schools? You know, they're talking about, we have a site that we want to find, we want to buy it or take it by eminent domain, we know what we want to do, like, they're, they're there. They just need the funding. We are, we're, we're asking them to submit a statement of interest to the state about something that probably won't happen for ten years. So it's just, it's mind-boggling to me that, that we're hearing this constant stream of, you're not being supportive enough. They're not being supportive enough. They really aren't. We've asked them to support us on all of these different initiatives. They don't support us. But the bottom line is, is that we have no reason not to support them. We have no reason not to assume that that project's going first, I mean, going first. And quite honestly, I don't think anybody on this board or previous iterations of this board has done anything to demonstrate that we would ever try to leapfrog them in line.
Russ.
Yeah, I agree with that. I think.
It's just blows my mind.
I think at town meeting though, probably some of us and most of the town voted no to Wolf Swamp, but that was about the location.
Sure.
So I, I think the middle school is so far down the road, even if we start today, you know, we've shown over and over again, it doesn't happen for quite a long time. The DPW still could fail because of the cost. There's people questioning, should we spend eighteen million on a DPW anywhere?
Right.
Or forget the location. I think that's why it may or may not pass. I really have no idea. I think it's irrelevant what we do is, I mean, as long as we're not out there trying to undermine it. But even if we publicly support it, I think it comes down to money at the end of the day.
I agree.
So.
I think we do need to share with the select board and be candid with them about the fact that there is concern out there about the cost, in particular, purchasing new land and questions about um existing land and whether it is viable. And I think we, I think the town needs more information and it's something that we need to discuss with them at our joint meeting. Stephanie.
This is where I have these mixed feelings with what is our role as a school committee? The DPW has, I mean, the select board has to approve a statement of interest if it's to go through.
Right.
We have no role in what happens with that DPW.
Right.
We vote as residents. Um I can understand the role of DPW in the schools, but um it really is that separation. I see my role as advocating for education for our students and advocating
Right.
For what I believe is needed um in the schools. And then, you know, the select board has a role in part of that because they are the one who says yes or no to an SOI for the middle schools. But outside of that, you know, I, I don't know about, um, you know, and it is that question I brought up of, why do we sit up front at town meeting with the select board? What's the purpose? How much of a role do we have in the town side of things? They have a much bigger role in the school side of things. But as far as our role in what happens and what they do, um, we don't. So then it gets into this part of, well, if you do this for me, I'll do that for you and
Well, that's just politics.
That's the politics I really want to keep out of the school committee as much as possible and just, my position is advocating for what we need in this school, making that case, not necessarily telling them what they should or should not do with their money. I'm voting as a resident and really, you know, trying to keep to that as much as possible. And I know it's tough when you have a budget and you're both part of it, but um I really try to stay to that as much as possible when we go through these budget meetings. And what do we need as a school? And we're advocating and we're not going to nitpick their budget. They've got to make those decisions themselves and I'll be voting on those decisions at town meeting as a resident. But as a school committee member, I'll be voting on issues regarding education and what's the best for the students. And I really try to keep that um strong in my thinking as we go forward because I think it, it gets tangled.
And I also think that it gets confusing when, you, you know, there are people who have been saying all along, why isn't, why aren't the committees working together on all of these building projects? Why isn't there sort of a larger picture group or, you know, where we're not looking at each project in isolation? So that's where I think, for me, I agree with everything you were saying, but that's where my role, I think about our role becomes a little bit different as leaders in the community and working together with the select board and somehow being able to collaborate with them on how our town can plan for these three projects that are in the pipeline.
Ideally, I think that is in the reason behind the joint meeting, but going in there, we advocate that we need X, Y, and Z and this is why we need it. And then it's up to them whether they look at the picture as a whole. We don't have a lot of, we don't have any power in that. I mean, it really is up to them.
John, did you want to, did you have any thoughts on this? You haven't spoken yet, I didn't.
I don't think the select board wants to build a new senior center at all. I think they don't want to just leave the current building there. And they, they could care less about the middle schools. That's their position. They uh, they have the gentlemen from the finance committee make a statement that it's all about money and that we can't afford this. It's like talking to a wall. I really don't have any optimism about successful dealings with those people. To be frank.
I think the, the problem in town is we've gotten to the point where it's like my project, your project, they're all our projects. I mean, as a town, they all affect us one way or the other. So the middle school isn't my project. You know, the DPW is not the town's project. It, we're all paying for all the projects. So I think their idea recently to vote or potentially vote on the town-wide building committee, that's a good one because we need a body that just talks about our capital needs, not school need, town need. It's all the same thing. So what I didn't get to do is watch the last meeting. I don't know if anybody else did, to see if they voted for it. But if they vote for it, obviously, we should ask to have a role in the process since we're most of the budget and we have the more expensive buildings. But I think right now we're lost in this, you know, you, you have something over here that we want and we want this and, you know, if you asked me to vote for the middle school today, I'd vote no because this is not a time to build a middle school. I mean, the debt goes down in two thousand twenty-three. You got to start now to hit two thousand twenty-three. I mean, that's really the goal. But I think that's getting lost in this whole which project goes first and all of that, which I think is, you know, I wouldn't vote for the middle school myself right now. I think it's too early. We don't have the money. Um it would be a mistake to push the actual project for today. The question is, do we have the money to do the other two? Either, you know, I, I get the finance committee is probably going to weigh in on that, but it's, it's tough when it becomes us versus them type of thing, which has it become? I mean, Michael's right. It's been this, there's no reason to think we're going to undermine anything. I mean, I'll say right now, I'm not undermining anything. What I'm going to do is look at it and say, is that cost-effective and can we afford it right now? Same thing that I'll do with the middle school eventually when it comes up.
Well, if I could add one other thought. Probably, probably we ought to be asking for more money for improvements of the existing middle schools. I think that's the best we could get right now. We're not going to get any kind of funding or getting them to sign off on uh an SOI for a new building. We're just not going to do it. So we have to ask them for a couple hundred thousand or whatever it is that we can get to, to invest in major repairs or reconstruction of the existing building. Yes, we're stuck with them.
I think we should finish the administrative reports and then continue this discussion under the middle school working group motion because it's really relevant to that motion. So I don't want to cut anybody off, but I just think we should, we should set it back where it belongs. Nichelle, did you have any report beyond your?
No, that was it.
Okay.
Yeah.
And do we have any other reports tonight from any other?
I'll give a quick legislative. There's not much. Um the branches are both meeting in the next weeks, week or two to do farewell, farewell speeches when members leave. Uh but the session will begin on January fourth, which is coming up. So and we'll get a budget from the governor starting probably late February, maybe early March. Um he's got some constitutional requirement to get it out early. Um and then I've got one other report, not so much a report, but just an update. I will be asking you at a, probably for the next meeting, um to place on the agenda a communications plan for my role as communications person. So I'll be presenting a sort of plan for communications throughout the budget season and into, you know, the rest of the year.
In regard to what topics, budget, middle school?
I'm going to do a full monkey.
Everything.
Everything, but uh there's some really cool innovative ways that we can communicate with people. Um and so that's going to be what I'm going to talk to you about and hopefully won't put too much extra work on Tom's plate. I'm just kidding. A little bit of a lot. So yeah, so that's, that's all, yeah.
Okay. Subcommittee reports. Does, did the finance committee, excuse me, the finance subcommittee meet?
So um before we get there, the food services committee met this, uh, last week.
Sorry, Michelle.
That's okay. And um we just discussed some menu changes, some improvements that have been happening uh with the food program. We have a new manager and she's been doing a phenomenal job.
Oh, great.
Getting uh, getting up to speed on everything, as is our new staff. So that's a successful meeting. Uh we don't have a report for the finance subcommittee. In terms of the middle school working group, we met um on November seventeenth and again on November twenty-ninth. And at our twenty, meeting on the twenty-ninth, we um decided based on the information we have and the feedback we received to recommend, we voted to recommend to the school committee to submit a statement of interest to the Massachusetts School Building Authority.
Okay, so that's our next.
So with that, I will make a motion and then we can do discussion on it.
Yep. Let me just make one comment before I move on to your motion. Nichelle, you, I, if you could just put in your notes, uh, do you get a chance to connect with the new food services director?
Um, we're still working on it, so I will let you know when we get information.
Okay, yeah, I just didn't want it to fall through the cracks in terms of.
Yeah, we're working on it. I've talked to Mr. Duncan.
Okay, great.
So just a correction, we only met on the seventeenth. I'm, I'm just, we had a tentative meeting for today, but we did not, uh, we did not need it.
Okay, so we have a motion?
I would like to make a motion. I move on the recommendation of the middle school working group that the school committee approved moving forward with their intent to submit statement of interests for Williams Middle School and Glenbrook Middle School this school year.
Second.
Okay, discussion.
So um just, you know, in terms of the information that led us to recommend this, um, you know, as, as um, you know, taxpayers, we think it's the most fiscally responsible thing to do at this point, looking at this, the townwide facilities report, listening to J C J. We certainly think that it's the best thing to do for our students in terms of planning ahead and preparing for the next steps down the road in the two schools. We've talked about how lengthy the process is. And as Michael said, at best, you know, we're looking at ten years from now. So if we don't have, if we don't move forward with this and create a plan or get suggestions for what we should do, um, we might be boxed into a solution that we don't want in ten, you know, in five years where we're spending on the two schools in ways that we would rather not. So um that was, I think, a summary of what we discussed at middle school working group.
So I think it would be really good at this point for somebody who's comfortable doing it to give a very brief overview again for the public who would be watching this tape of the timeline, if anybody has quick access to it or wants to just give a general overview of the timeline for the project. I think there, um, to piggyback on some of the DPW discussion, there is some, you know, there are some rumblings about how's it going to impact DPW. Really, the timeline for the middle school, I want to be clear at the outset of this vote, this discussion, that there's no conflict whatsoever with the DPW. It's a, an extended process that looks like it would take somewhere around seven years. And Marty, maybe you would have the good.
I could, if you want, I could pull up the slide. There's
Oh, that's great.
Three or four slides from our earlier presentation.
That'd be great, thank you. Just to have clarity, if that's not too, I appreciate it.
Were we A fifteen here, was it?
Yes.
Yes.
Who can, who can remember? Yeah, so it, it begins with, um, as, as the slides are coming up, it begins with the submission of a statement of interest and. Oh, excuse me.
You can mute your, um.
There we go, sorry about that. Lost the slides now.
It's very meta that you're watching the live stream while you're at the meeting.
That's not what I want.
It's funny hearing that.
There we go. So it begins with um the submission of a statement of interest. We would be, if, if we were to pursue that in the spring of, you'd have to add one.
We would be, if we were to pursue that in the spring of, you'd have to add one, add one year to these slides. Sorry about that. I don't know why it's not coming up.
It just disappeared.
Let me try it.
Take your time.
Oh, there we go. So this, you add a year to this, but this kind of gives you a timeline. So if in the spring of 17, we submitted a statement of interest, that's where you have to identify, you know, you start to work with the MSBA on what the best solution might be. You have to demonstrate a high level of need. That really is the kind of where the J C J report comes in. Add a year going forward. Now we're into the winter of 18, the fall of 18, where you would potentially be invited into the program. And so that's a, that's a year just to find out whether or not you're invited into the, into the program. And beyond that, you get into an eligibility period, which is a, which is a year-long time period just to put together your building committee and to get the town meeting authorization of a feasibility study. And further on, you're now into year two or three, you're putting together a project team, identifying a project manager, going out to request services for construction. And then you're into the year sort of four and five now, I guess, scope and budget development. The full feasibility study is completed. And then there's another town meeting vote to appropriate the costs for construction. And then there's a referendum for debt exclusion as well. So now going forward, again, I started this with a spring of 16 submissions. So now we're really into the fall of 21, fall of 23, you're talking about ultimately construction of a repaired, renovated, or combined facility. So it's a, it's a drawn out process, probably seven years, best case scenario. And we all know that there's, there's hiccups and hitches along the way. So, you know, as Russ said earlier, you have to start the discussion now to come up with a solution down the road. So.
Right, so our goal is to, with this vote, is to get our name in the hat so that we can at least initiate this process. And once, once it's voted and it goes to the MSBA, we could be accepted into the program this year, we could submit again, it could be another year, we really have no idea. But what we're asking for potentially with this vote is to start the process. And how many, does anyone know the answer to how many town meetings would involve, are involved in the?
Two.
Any type of, two? So one is.
You have a vote for feasibility.
And one for funds.
Where you have to bond, and then you have a vote to approve the bond issue for the final project.
Okay.
Which then puts it up for the override, which then puts it on the ballot. Both of those put it on the ballot.
So there's really three chances for the town to say, we want to move forward or we want to stop. One is the submission of the SOI. The second, as Mike said, the feasibility study vote. And then the third is the vote on the construction costs.
So, so am I correct in my understanding that the feasibility study vote is a vote on what the MSBA is recommending to our community?
No.
No, it's to pay for the costs to do a feasibility study.
Okay, so that would, the, the recommendation of whether, you know, they want to combine one or keep two, when would that?
That's an outcome of feasibility.
Okay. And so that wouldn't be, that would be something that folks would be voting on in the, in the town meeting where we appropriate the funds.
For construction, yes.
Okay. I just want to make sure I have the timeline correct and everybody who's watching has the timeline correct.
Yep.
Did you want to say something?
Well, I was just going to say, at this point, the only action that we would be, that we're voting on right now is to submit a statement of interest, which is a no cost, no commitment type of application where we're saying, you know, Marty's explained it, those like basically we're spinning paperwork saying we have a situation and we'd like you to look at it for us.
Look at it, yep.
And we're not committing to anything and we're not being charged anything at this point.
Yep.
Before we would be, we would have several votes by the town.
It's, to answer one of the questions we had at the meeting with the board a while back, it's not a runaway train either because like Amherst recently, they did the feasibility and then they voted not to move forward with the project. So it's not a, it's not a done deal that once you do the statement of interest or even after you do the feasibility study, that the project will happen. Sometimes towns vote against it. And it's, you know, I would like nothing more than to be able to just say, well, let's renovate the buildings for some, you know, lower cost. You know, as a taxpayer, Andrew Lamb just sent a very good letter to the editor, the Finance Committee member. And he laid out the cost over time and what the three projects would look like together. That's not a pretty scenario, which is why I think we really have to look at what do we do with the DPW? What do we do with the senior center? What do we do with the middle schools? J C J is kind of, that report tells me right now, I don't see a way to renovate the schools or repair them in a cost-effective way that's going to work for the town long term. If we do a feasibility study and MSBA says there is a cost-effective way to do that, we better look at it because those numbers don't look good.
Right.
You know, over time. But we can't even get there without doing the statement of interest. I mean, I don't, we don't need a, you know, the best middle school in the whole state because we can't afford that building. What we need is something done with the middle schools that's cost-effective. And I think the only way we can find out what that is, is by going through this process.
Well, we also have the air quality issues at the middle schools and they're real. They affect children, students. That's why I'm saying we ought to be talking about some money for admittedly repairs that if eventually we build new, they're going to tear the building down.
Right.
But it's, you know, that's our dilemma.
And we've heard that from parents when we do these presentations, like that's fine, we want to deal with the schools, but what are you doing in the interim? And that's a very valid point. I mean, we have been sending them, I mean, our recent capital request does address some of those issues. But will the town agree to pay the money when they're not sure what we're doing? But of course, it's the chicken and the egg. Well, we're not sure what we're doing because we can't get the SOI through, so we don't know what the state's going to tell us we should do. So.
Michael.
We find ourselves frequently, and the same is true for other, other projects, but we find ourselves hung up on hypotheticals. And I'm not talking about our board, I'm talking about our community. Our community finds itself hung up on hypotheticals about, well, if you get approved tomorrow, you know it's going to happen. Or, you know, any, any series of hypothetical situations that it could occur. We are at a very challenging point in our community's history in terms of future of our financial forecast, our financial forecasting and what we're able to do. And we can spend a lot of time talking about the people who didn't do enough when they had the chance and the money was there 20 or 30 years ago, who didn't move the high school forward 20 years ago when it needed to be. But that's not productive. And I think that there's going to be an element of this conversation that involves deferred maintenance and the things that didn't happen. We find ourselves constantly talking to other boards and committees about hypotheticals. You know, are you going to approve an SOI, you're going to get a middle school next year? Well, we're not going to replace your windows. We're not going to replace your air vents. We're not going to do, we're not going to abate the asbestos glue off the floor. We're not going to do the work that needs to get done to keep the buildings in order so that our students can actually go. And so when a boiler breaks down at Glenbrook, we have to have an argument with people who don't understand what we're talking about because they don't pay attention to what we're talking about on capital planning, on the Select Board. And at the end of the day, we have students in classrooms that are too cold or too hot. We have air quality that isn't good. We have science labs that are too small for students in wheelchairs. We have a, we have an entire middle school that's not handicap accessible. We are beyond the point of talking about, you know, maybe we should talk about at some point. We are at the point where we need to talk about it now. And I am looking to the Select Board of Selectmen to find us an alternative if they're not willing to approve these statements of interest. Because as we've talked about here tonight and explained very clearly, we're not committing ourselves to anything by submitting an application. If you get into Harvard, you don't have to go. I mean, that's the bottom line. And so we are at a point where we need to, as a community, act. There is no more sitting back and waiting for things to get worse. And we have a middle school teacher sitting right over there who can tell you exactly what it's like to walk into Williams every single day. And it's probably the same building she walked into when she started her career. So, you know, we're going to hear from people a lot of reasons not to do something. And we always do on this board. We hear reasons why we shouldn't, you know, buy certain things, why we shouldn't educate students a certain way, why we shouldn't redistrict when we need to. We often don't talk about the reasons why we should. And this board has done a good job this year of articulating the reasons why we should. And, you know, the biggest challenge that we're going to have in the next couple of weeks is making sure that that message gets to the people who need to hear it most. But every time they throw up their hands and every time that they say no, and every time that they try to push us back, we need to respond with a very simple question. What is your solution? Because there hasn't been one for 20 years. If there had been one, then we would have had our air ducts replaced and we would have had our roofs replaced or at least maintained. We would have had whatever upgrades needed to be, needed to happen. But, you know, three years ago, you couldn't plug a microwave into Williams without blowing out the circuits. These buildings are not sufficient for educating still children in the 21st century.
Right.
They're simply not. And we are doing a disservice to our community. We are doing a disservice to the students in those classrooms, to the teachers that work in those classrooms by delaying. And listen, we don't have a lot of commercial real estate. We don't have any industrial real estate. The only form of economic development that we have in this community is the quality of education that we have in this town. And I can't help but think that when we have to ask our students to use MKS 2.0 on technology that may not be able to be supported in those buildings because of the electricity or because of the bandwidth, that we're not in, we're not where we need to be. So, you know, what is their solution?
Right.
That's the mantra. And, you know, I'm ready to vote on this because it's never been more timely.
Yep.
Are we submitting, are we looking to submit one SOI or two SOIs? Somebody had talked about whether we were going to submit one.
Two.
Okay. And I think that's an important distinction to make, that there is no decision.
Yeah.
This isn't about one middle school. This isn't about renovating two. This isn't about making two. This isn't about, none of that is decided. This is the, in my eyes, the only step and necessary step to find out what to do about these buildings.
Right.
And I don't, I cannot understand why the Select Board would turn it down. That if they do, they would definitely, I think we deserve a response to that because I cannot see why something like this would be turned down.
And I know there's a petition online that was started at Center School for, in support of the middle school's SOI going forward. I think it's got about 100 people that signed it in the last couple of days. So at some point, I assume they're going to submit that to the board as well.
I think each one of them should email the Select Board.
Wait, if you could contact the, the person who initiated it and let her know that, that would be really helpful.
I think for me, I just want to step back for a second and share that when I was coming into the school committee this year and thinking about the middle schools, you know, I have my own experience with the middle schools. And one of the questions on my mind was, why do we have to build new middle schools? How can we make these middle schools healthy and safe for our kids? And that's the point that I keep coming back to, is as a board member, I cannot not submit an SOI because I know now that renovating is really not an option at these schools given the age of the systems. And I know that we don't have ideal air quality situations at either one of those schools. Health and safety is what I keep going back to. Sometimes when I have conversations with other people about building new middle schools, there, there are comments made about, well, you have a brand new high school, why do we have to have brand new buildings? And I, I, I just want to assure the public that nobody on this committee is looking for fancy, new, showy buildings. What we've discovered in this process is that we have health and safety issues that are very real for our students who are at very critical developmental ages. We also have staff in these buildings and we have great concern for their health and safety. So in terms of moving forward, there's no choice. We have to move forward. Something has to be done. And given the price differential that I looked at from J C J, just those numbers alone from renovating to building new buildings, it was, I mean, significant savings building new buildings. So I think that a theme that is starting to come up, and this is why I put the indoor air quality study on our agenda tonight, which we'll be talking about in a little while. You know, Stephanie said, we have a responsibility to advocate for our students and for our staff in Long Meadow. And it's not just about having fancy equipment and fancy technology, but we do need to have facilities that A, are compatible with the kind of teaching and learning that we have in this, today, and also are healthy and safe buildings for our kids to be in. Stephanie.
Also, just as an opposing point too, is I, you know, with the report, and all due respect with J C J's report, I'm not completely sold that we can't renovate. I'm definitely not sold on one building. I'm definitely, I, I want more information. And the only way that we can get that information is by submitting these SOI.
Right, well said.
So I am of the opinion that I'm, I'm, there is definitely nothing, you know, no opinion that I am leaning toward.
Yeah.
I really am not. I, so I want this done so we can find out what to do.
I think, yeah.
That was one report. I don't know the cost going forward or cost savings if we have one. I don't know the implications completely on the education. I don't know where that building would go. And I really don't know, I want more information about renovating the buildings as well. So this is the only way to do it. And that is why I'm for it. And there's really no other way to get that information.
Yep, that's exactly right.
Nichelle? So I agree with everything you just said and I would love to call the question if you could.
Yes, please. Okay, everyone ready to vote? All those in favor? Excellent. Thank you. Thank you for bringing this motion forward, Middle School Working Group.
Jess, can I add really quickly that I know Liz isn't here, but in an email to the committee, she did express her support.
Thank you, yeah.
To put Liz on record as intending to vote yes.
Yep. Thanks for remembering that, Michael. Yeah, I feel, she said I hit Liz's phone. I also, I fully support going forward with an SOI. Thank you for reminding me.
You're welcome.
Next on our agenda under new business is the indoor air quality study. I hope. Oh, I'm sorry, policy sub. Yes. Stephanie, I almost skipped over you. Do you want me to skip over you? That's what I was thinking.
Actually.
So.
Those plans.
For first reading, which is, you have JKAA dash R, which is the physical restraint procedures. That one is in your packet. Policy sub members, what do you want to do? Do you want to table this? Because there was a typo, part of it was left out, I believe. I don't know if we want a clean copy of this one forward. Do we want to read off what I sent to Diana's, what I believe we had agreed to in our meeting? How do you want to?
Let's bring it back at the next.
Bring it back, we'll table it.
I'll finish editing. I did, I was doing, I apologize because I can't seem to get this one correct. That's my fault.
Not a problem.
Tabling JK.
I moved to table JK until the next meeting.
Yeah, but the procedure ones.
So that it's clean.
December, is it 13?
Yep.
Yep. So date certain. We don't need to vote on it.
Okay.
Thanks, Stephanie. Okay. Unfinished business, we don't have any this week, new business, indoor air quality.
Oh, can I do unfinished business real quick?
Yeah, yeah.
Can I just follow up on the Wolf's long phrase, Kate?
Oh, yes.
Deadline is coming up and I want to make sure that goes in.
We, we met with Dan McCarthy, Facilities Director, today, Tom and I.
We, we met with Dan McCarthy, Facilities Director today, Tom and I.
Okay.
And that is moving forward.
Okay.
He has collected all the information he needs. He's confirmed it with us that it's the right project and it's what we need at Wolf Swamp. And so, town manager Stephen Crane, we also spoke to him about it. He's putting together the application. My understanding is that it will be a priority of his.
Excellent.
So, we, we fully expect that that application will be completed and submitted to CPC.
That came up in the joint administrative meeting too. That's what I think Crane said it would be done.
When's the deadline?
I think Monday, I think so.
And just quickly, I wanted to ask if I could, is there any update on the recess discussion that we had? Did you look into?
I think that's going to go on the next agenda.
Next agenda, we talked about.
Okay. Thank you.
Definitely, yeah. Diane, would you mind just adding that to our next agenda also? Thanks. Thanks, Michelle.
Yep.
Am I missing anything else before I move on?
No, you're good.
Okay. I, you, you should have at your places the proposal for preliminary I A Q assessment, indoor air quality assessment for Glenbrook Middle School and for Williams Middle School. I, I brought this forward because there, we, you know, we've all discussed tonight and in subcommittee and prior meetings, our concern about air quality at our middle schools. And we've gotten feedback from parents about concerns. And I think that this is at least one thing that we can do to get information that we need to sort of figure out where we can go while we are planning for a process for new, potentially for new buildings. So, I just want to clarify the information that you have. The proposal is the following. It's $500 per school, so 500 for Williams, 500 for Glenbrook. That, those, that $1,000 includes a walkthrough, an evaluation of the building, materials and mechanical systems for all possible environmental concerns, real-time environmental measurements of carbon dioxide to determine fresh air exchange rate, carbon monoxide, airborne particle levels and particle sizes, formaldehyde levels, ozone levels, T V O C, which is total volatile organic compound levels, relative humidity, wet bulb, dew point and temperature, moisture content of materials. And then what the $200 includes below per school is a formal written report of observations and findings, which would also include a proposal for, you know, what type of samplings. There was one other thing that I was going to add. Oh, the asbestos. I'm wondering if we want him to look at that as well, actually.
We should. Don't we have to have the asbestos already?
Yeah, there would be a, a regular filing that we have to do, have to have on file about.
Right, we wouldn't need another one.
I don't know, I think he would just look at everything anyway, so.
We could get him perhaps, if, if it's an area that he's got some expertise in, we could get him the, here a report on asbestos levels and containment procedures and all that.
Okay.
So.
So, I also asked him whether he would be willing to do air samplings onsite at the schools the day that he does the walkthrough. And he said that he would, he really enjoys working with school districts and would definitely be willing to do a couple of air samples for irritants such as mold at, at the schools if he feels that there's, if that they're necessary, given what he's seeing that day that he does the walkthrough.
Does that change the cost?
No.
Okay.
That, that's, that's what I was trying to say, that he is willing to do those as part of the $500 per school cost.
So, the total's 1,400.
Right. So, the total's 1,400. So, what this is doing is giving us, he's doing an initial walkthrough, he's looking at all the systems, possibly doing some air sampling, and then giving us a formal written report of his observations and recommendations in terms of how we need to move forward. And that would direct our discussions with the select board about what we need to do sooner rather than later. Michelle?
Can I make a motion?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
I should have done that in the beginning. That's okay.
Oh.
I, I moved that the school committee authorized funding up to 1,400 for indoor air quality assessment and testing at the two middle schools.
Why don't we just say 1,400? So, it doesn't need to be upped.
Okay. As amended.
Crane, or Lester got some.
I need a second.
Somebody need a second.
Second.
Discussion.
Who is this person? Who's doing these tests? Who is it, where?
So, his name is Walt Benzinger, and I should have sent you his C V. I apologize for not doing that. But he has worked with, I don't have his information with me, but he's worked in a lot of towns, public buildings and public schools, doing exactly this type of work. So, he's particularly in this area. He's well-known and has an excellent reputation.
Okay. Is he independent or is he?
Yeah, he is, yep.
Is he licensed? Are there some credentials involved?
I don't think there's a licensure that's a requirement, but I can get the answer to you.
Well, it would be good if we're going to use this material evidence for further discussion that.
I don't know the answer to that.
His credentials being known.
Yep.
Yeah, I kind of would like to know a little bit of that. I don't know. I mean, I can, I guess I can just go on what you're saying, but I am curious.
I might have the documents in my office if you want me to see if I can make copies.
That would be great.
I might.
I was going to try to pull it.
Yeah, I'm looking for my information.
Pretty sure I have it on my email.
He's got a website too.
He does.
Home Environmental Services?
Yeah.
Sue just said there's a website for him?
Okay.
Really pleasing color scheme on the website.
Is he an interior designer too?
Yeah, I'm interested.
You wouldn't be testing those.
He talked to you about how he's taking these measurements and where, I mean, I can't imagine he's going all over each of the schools and every area. He's looking at areas where he finds particular, what he would deem to maybe be concerning. And that's where he's going to look at ozone levels, I don't, I'm wondering.
So, he says on his website that they offer expert investigation services for environmental concerns in your home or office. Our expertise focuses on enhancing the indoor air quality of homes and buildings to ensure air safety, safe air quality. With a background in basic sciences and a knowledge of forensics investigative techniques, our founder, Walt, has been a leader in providing home environmental services and comprehensive onsite building science investigations for building, homes and businesses. Newly for 20 years, using extensive equipment, laboratory analysis and extensive knowledge of building materials and system. Walt and our team can identify the causes and problems and guide clients to obtaining healthy indoor air conditions. So, over 3,000 comprehensive environmental assessments in residential, commercial and nonprofit government buildings has retained as an expert witness in a number of court cases that require proof of condition as casualties, or as a casualty. Yeah, that's what it says.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Oh, the asbestos.
I, I would want him to, when he does the walkthrough, to go with like Dan McCarthy. Because he would know the systems we have, is, you know, and he could kind of say what's been replaced recently or what hasn't been replaced.
Where do we have information that they've gone through? Have they done schools around here? Have they?
He gave us a list of.
He did give a list.
Yeah.
I called some of them too.
Oh, you did, okay. Yeah.
But some of them couldn't recall because it might have been before they became administrators there. And the ones that did recall him said he did a very good job and they liked working with him. But I only called about four different clients, so.
Thank you for doing that.
No, I just want to make sure like, you know, if we're going to do it, we're going to make sure it's done right the first time and that it's solid because it's important information.
I mean, it is, and I, thank you. If we want to, you know, if we want to hold off for that reason, thank you. Until we have a little bit more of an understanding and somebody does want to explore it a little more in terms of our options, that's fine too, either way. But yeah, thank you so much, Tom.
You're welcome.
That's very kind of you. So, this is a full list of his clients.
So, this would be basically a walkthrough to determine where the problem areas might be.
Right.
And then he's going to tell us where we should probably test further.
Right.
That's kind of the idea.
Right. I mean, he's just, he's really skilled at just walking into buildings and he can see visually, okay, these are where the issues are. So, we'll, we actually are getting a lot of bang for our buck in terms of getting a lot of information that we would need to determine what kind of testing we want to pursue.
I'm ready.
Hi, yes, I, is there an urgency that, I have a couple of questions that I, I mean, it's not a ton of money, but for me, I want to make sure that this is done right, that we're looking at the right things, that we're going to look at the right things. And there's a couple of questions that I have that I don't have the answers to tonight. If it's not urgent, can we bring it back the next meeting and vote on it? Or were you looking for something like A S A C?
It's really up to the committee. I, I think, you know, there's, there is an urgency in terms of the air quality at the middle schools, but, you know, it's been, it's an ongoing urgency.
And they might not, they wouldn't get out there, I mean, if we're talking two weeks, if we could just bring it back the next time and then it would just allow me.
The only, the only thing that I thought would be if this work might inform the development of the statement of interest. And I think the Middle School Working Group was hoping to have that statement of interest completed in early January or by mid-January. And so, I don't know what his turnaround time would be. I don't know how quickly he can produce a report that might be helpful for us to incorporate it to the SOI.
That's fine. If they, if we vote to have them come through, then I can just have those questions raised to them when they're out here and just making sure that.
Okay.
That'd be fine.
I do want to acknowledge tonight, even though it hasn't been entered into correspondence officially yet, that we received an emailed letter from Kim, Kim King, a former, former school committee member who did talk about concerns about her son's health. He's a student at Williams and has been quite ill this year. So, she did say it was okay to read her email, but I think I'll hold off right now. But I did want everybody to be aware of that. And it's not the first time that I've gotten feedback of this type from parents. So, it's very concerning. Michelle?
I was, I, I, I hear your concerns in terms of not knowing this person and what we're really signing up for. But I think what, the way I looked at it was, it was a very affordable way to have somebody who has, you know, a track record of doing this to come in and just assess and say, I think you should test here, I think you should test here and this is why. So, it's really an affordable way to say whether or not we should move forward with more testing. And at that point, I think if it was anything extensive, we would have to look at it and decide who we'd want to use for that or whatnot.
Yep.
So, they're only taking a limited sampling, if that, on this round when he goes out there?
Well, yeah, initially he didn't, we said, let's just not do any samplings. Let's just have you do the walkthrough, give us the information. And then we can determine how much we, you know, what we want to spend and what you would recommend for samplings. But I think, you know, because we're going to have him in those buildings, it's really valuable that he's willing to do some samplings to see what we're dealing with. And if we are dealing with some active irritants, we need to know about, you know, some glaring issues that he observes that we can remediate and address sooner rather than later. I want that information. Yeah. So, he was very kind and willing to include that. Anything else?
I'm ready to vote.
Okay. All those in favor? Thank you. So, we will need to do some logistics, Marty, with arranging that with Dan McCarthy. You know, one of the questions I had for him was doing the, his investigation while school's in session versus not in session. That might be a good conversation for you to have with him.
I hope would be that he would do it while school's in session.
I think it's more accurate, his data would be more accurate. So, if there is a way that we can accommodate him that is at least disruptive to classrooms, I believe that would be the ideal scenario. We can talk about that.
Yeah, we can do that, yeah, not a problem.
We did our walkthroughs during, school is in session. Yeah, we, you know, I'm sure we can make that work.
I'm just, is there anyone else that anyone wants to recommend going on the walkthrough besides Dan McCarthy? Because this would be a good time to brainstorm on that.
I think Tom should go.
Tom, okay. You're going?
Thank you, Michael, yes.
Dan McCarthy, maybe the custodians in the building?
The head custodians for sure, yeah.
They might have a longer history of familiarity.
Yeah, and that's what I didn't want to miss, those, that detail of I wouldn't want him to do a walkthrough like dawn with him at Williams and, yeah.
Yeah, at Williams, he gave us some information that we wouldn't have gotten otherwise when we did our walkthrough. Glenbrook too.
Okay. Okay. Next on our agenda, we have a resolution that's been submitted by Michael Clark. Would you?
How do you want me to do it?
Well.
We haven't done a resolution in a while.
I think, we don't have a motion on our agenda, but I think you should make your motion.
Sure.
And then we will get a second and we will have a discussion.
All right, so I move that the school committee adopt the resolution, I didn't give it a title, so, but the resolution titled Resolution of Long Meadow School Committee dated for the 28th of November.
Sorry.
Well, I sent it out yesterday.
Oh, yeah.
Discussion. Actually, Michael, why don't you give an introduction?
Sure. So, at the last school committee meeting, it got late, so I rushed through it. But essentially, the reason that I wanted to bring this forward was because I felt that after hearing from teachers about some of the reactions that their students have been having to some of the really sort of hate-filled language and some of the instances of hate crimes that have actually occurred in our area, it was important for us as the leadership body, as the elected body that leads the schools to reiterate that, you know, we are a safe space. We are a space that, and a community that celebrates, you know, all the different types of diversity that we have within our communities, whether it's religion, whether it's sexual orientation or gender identity, whether it's race or color or national origin, that we, as a school community and as a school committee, believe that we are stronger because of those differences that they make us a more diverse and caring place. And that's honestly the message, I think, that we, and I might be alone in this, but I think that's the message we really want our students to learn and go out into the world, you know, understanding and believing and knowing that, you know, differences are what makes us stronger, especially as a community, so.
Michael, I think you should read it.
And I'm going to read it now.
Because, yeah, so people who are watching know what we're talking about.
Yeah, so essentially what I wanted to do was write a, you know, sort of have a resolution. It's obviously non-binding, but certainly just as an affirmation of these beliefs, and so I will read it. Whereas the Long Meadow School Committee is the body charged with the development of educational goals and policies which impact the operation of the school district, including the delivery of education in the classroom. And whereas the Long Meadow School Committee is comprised of seven duly-elected officials, each serving three-year terms, who are entitled to free expression as guaranteed by the First Amendment of the United States Constitution. And whereas the Long Meadow School Committee has supported through fiscal appropriations the existence of the Metco program, including the administrative position of Metco Coordinator, where students of color who reside outside of Long Meadow attend the Long Meadow Public Schools. And whereas the Long Meadow School Committee has supported through fiscal appropriations active participation in the school choice program, where students who reside outside of Long Meadow attend the Long Meadow Public Schools. And whereas the Long Meadow School Community routinely celebrates the cultural diversity within Long Meadow Public Schools through family-centered events which highlight students' cultural diversity and national origin. And alarmed by the rhetoric of the, that, of the national election, or alarmed that the rhetoric of the national election has inspired hate groups to target Jewish Americans, African-Americans, Hispanic Americans, members of the LGBTQ community and immigrants with acts of violence and hate speech. And concerned that members of the staff and our student body, of the, staff and student body of Long Meadow. body of Long Meadow Public Schools have expressed their fears following events, both locally and nationally, which target specific protected classes on the basis of religion, race, national origin, sexual orientation, and gender identity, and can be labeled as hate crimes. We strongly condemn those acts of violence and hate speech which threaten the safety of the public and the free expression of religion and thought that we enjoy as citizens of the United States. And we solemnly affirm our commitment to protecting and championing diversity in our classrooms through our staff's teaching practice and our community. And be it resolved that the Long Meadow School Committee will continue to advocate for and work to build a culturally and socio-economically diverse school community where students, regardless of their race, color, religion, national origin, or ancestry, physical or mental ability, age, sexual orientation, gender identity, citizenship, or genetic information, are welcomed and celebrated for the unique perspectives and experiences they bring to our community. That was a mouthful. So.
Discussion. John?
Well, it's been seconded, right?
Yeah.
I second it.
Yeah, you seconded it, yeah.
Well, I support this as a reaffirmation of our commitment to diversity. It's something we prided ourselves on as a committee. And I think as a community, Long Meadow is an open community in terms of inviting to all kinds of folks. Of course, it's at the cost of real estate, so we could raise some questions about that, but in terms of equal opportunity, it's always been there. I'm talking about the cost of real estate.
Oh, oh, oh.
That's price and admission, right?
Oh, yes, okay.
And we perhaps could be criticized for our lack of public housing in this community, but we're not getting into that right now.
That's not our...
Certainly, the events of the last month on the national level, control over the Congress, both the Senate and the House, by a party that seems dedicated to a very cynical interpretation of what America's all about. This sort of affirmation is called for, and so I support it.
Thank you, John. Anybody else? Russ?
So, I've said this about all our resolutions, I think, but I'm not a fan of going down this route as a committee. Not just this resolution, but really resolutions in general. And I guess, in this particular situation, I was, one of the things I've been most impressed with, with this school system, is that my third grader and the fifth grader came home throughout this whole election and knew exactly what was going on, more than the adults that I, you know, that I see every day.
That is true.
So they were, they knew all about the candidates, they were talking about it in classes, the kids were, I think the school system did a fantastic job.
I'm glad you're acknowledging that, that is so true.
I mean, the teachers and everybody.
Yeah.
So I was so impressed, and after the election, the next morning, they came running in and they said, so who won? And they were very excited about it, and I told them what happened and I explained the situation. And I think that the day going into school, the teachers dealt with that very well, because there was some concern that, you know, maybe there'd be conversations that shouldn't happen or, or whatever. And so they came back from school, that was handled really well. And I think the community, in many ways, we do a very good job in this regard. I think we fail in certain ways, like the low-income housing, I think school choice, I brought that up last year, that, you know, we're not, we add, you know, what do we have? Two, two slots at kindergarten, something like that? So if we really want to make a difference, we actually do have some ways to make a difference, we haven't actually, you know, utilized those means. But I'm just not sure that when we look at resolutions, you know, this is, you know, in particular, there's pieces here that are really about the election and what a particular candidate may or may not have done. That I'm uncomfortable with as a committee member, because that's not really our role. I mean, our role is, if there's a problem, we should definitely fix it. I don't agree with discriminating in any way against any person in this country. And I think we need to make sure that we do our best to, you know, model that to people and make, you know, changes, if we need to make changes, to make sure that that's protected. And if somebody is concerned about feeling left out or feeling like the school system in some way isn't supporting them, we need to deal with that issue, and we need to make it clear. I just don't think resolutions are really a productive way to do it. I understand why you presented it, because, you know, it's, it's certainly all of our rights to bring things up like this, but I, I'm just not comfortable, myself, dealing with this particular issue in this way.
Stephanie?
I echo what Russ is saying, and I think for me, with something like this, I think about, what does this do? Does this increase our diversity in the, in the school, like we could? Does it address all of the things? Does it make any statements that teachers are saying or students are saying to you? Does it make them feel better? Or is there something going on that needs addressing? Which is what I see our role as. So, you know, you bring up school choice, and we, I know Jess had talked about that before, too, about possibly expanding it, it's very limited right now to a kindergarten entrance age, almost three years here, you know, trying to get free kindergarten for everyone. That was a big step, and that was a step that took a lot. Those are the things that I like to think about when we talk about increasing diversity, making our town more open to people, is what are we doing to make that happen? We talk about school supplies and families, we have a lot of kids here on free school lunch. What are we doing to help them with school supplies at the beginning of the year? What are we doing to help them throughout the year, when teachers are asking for more school supplies? What are we doing to make our community more welcoming and more diverse? Rather than just saying it, looking at our policies, looking at how kids are affected, looking to what we can do rather than what we can say? And I think that's how I've always, that's, that's how I move forward. I had questioned even whether we should make a statement about a ballot question out here, what was the purpose of it? Big statements to me, I'd rather see, what are we going to do? And I, I understand where you're coming from and why. Statements like this, you know, people want to make, and I think in many ways, they're important on a level of a teacher, but to make a statement like this, where we're actually in a position to make changes and do things, I'd rather take that route. Because then where do we, we have one resolution, and this resolution, for me, does feel very thickly laden with politics. And so that, I really, as I had said when we were talking before, I really want to keep out of school committee. I really do. My job, I see up here, is to advocate for the kids and really, what party you belong in or you associate with, that's not why I was here, I wasn't here elected on, because of any party affiliation, it really is about education. So for me, if there's a situation where kids are not feeling safe, or they're worried or concerned, or we need to be more diverse, or any of that, I want to know about it, I want to look at our policies, I want to know what we're doing and what we can do, rather than just saying. So that's sort of my stance on it.
Yeah, I agree with what Stephanie said in terms of the mechanism. I don't think anybody here disagrees with the spirit within which this was written at all, but I think that, you know, we really need to look at our role as school committee and what we do here, and we really do need to be mindful about our political involvement in terms of how it directly correlates to education in Long Meadow and students in Long Meadow. And that's sort of my litmus test when I look at anything that's quote-unquote "political", which is why, when I responded to somebody who did have a concern about it, I brought up the, the resolution that we passed regarding the charter school question, which I thought was excellent, because that issue did have a direct impact on funding for school, public schools already in existence in the Commonwealth, and you did an excellent job writing that. And John did an excellent job holding people's feet to the fire to make sure it got written. That's the kind of thing I really want to stay on top of. But again, while I agree with the spirit of everything that's said here 100%, I don't agree with the mechanism. And, and, you know, Michael, you and I also talked on a, on a side note a little bit about the reminder article, too, was very concerning to me, just in terms of sort of, you know, going to the press and talking to them on your own about an issue that hadn't come to the school committee yet, was really disconcerting to me. And also, on the, on the side of the press, you know, giving a platform for an issue like this, where there were no collaterals interviewed, there was nobody else called on the school committee, superintendent wasn't called, and it was written as an art, as a news article. It really should have been written as an op-ed piece, some sort of just letter to the editor format. I think in the future, in terms of our functioning as a committee, it's really better if we function as a committee in terms of news articles. And I, I say that both to you and to the person who wrote this article, that if there are issues that they're covering regarding our committee, there really needs to be, there really needs to be input from other folks on the committee and superintendent and other people. So, you know, that was a big concern for me also. But I, kudos to you truly for putting this together and for the, the spirit that I know it was written in. Stephanie?
I also say, when I had said last time, what I would like to see is a new mission statement that kind of incorporates a lot of the ideas that you have in here, and maybe we can use that. I think that's helpful for us when we're making decisions and policy decisions and remembering our priorities. It's just a suggestion, but...
It's a good idea.
That's where, um...
I think that's an excellent idea.
When I think about what's the purpose, for me, a mission statement guides us.
Yep.
And so if we're looking at incorporating those things, that, to me, would serve a purpose.
I love that, as part of a mission statement, yeah.
And then just piggybacking on your diversity and quality, I would like for us to think about ways that we can expand, and one of the things that is on my radar is, is school supplies and how we can better serve students within our community who are on free lunch and who we've identified as economically disadvantaged in some capacity as designated by DESI. These are families and students who we know we could serve better, I believe. And there's different ways of doing it and pairing up with nonprofits and that, but it needs to be a collaborative effort, and I really, that's something that I would like addressed. We do a lot of work outside for communities, which is absolutely wonderful, and I would never stop that, but I also want to not forget the, the kids who are in our school systems. And when I hear about supplies being asked for during the course of the year and students being punished for not bringing them in, and I'm reassured every time that teachers are aware and sensitive to students' needs, you can't be. You don't know the financial situations, and do those teachers know every student? That's, it's just not possible. So I would like to have some sort of, something in place so that we make sure that we can address the needs of, of those students. And I don't think it's hard, and I do think we could pair up with a nonprofit to get that done, or even the PTOs. It could be as simple at the beginning of the year, and that they could, there's all different mechanisms at schools, too, to, to make sure that kids are getting what they need. So that's one thing I'm thinking of, is how can we expand? There's all different things, school choice and getting more kids in the community from outside and not limiting it to, to kindergarten entrance age. And then there's all different things, when you talk about gender identity, and what do our bathrooms look like, and what kind of message are we sending? And those are the things I think of. What are we doing, what can we do better, what can we look at?
I also wanted to read, Liz Bone stated that, because she's not here, she wanted the committee to know that she fully supports Michael's resolution, and she doesn't think that there's any conflict or crossover into politics, but rather an affirmation of our values after politics has dragged discrimination into our communities. Okay. So I did want to read that on her behalf.
I haven't said anything, but a lot of what my, what I had been thinking was said already, so I won't reiterate everything, but I think what I heard that I liked the most from everybody is, let's take some action, some tangible ways of addressing this, instead of, as a resolution, let's, let's come up with some ideas and ways to improve the quality of our schools and the experience for the students.
Michael, do you want to withdraw your motion?
No, I'd rather have you all vote against it, honestly. Yeah, I think that you should all vote against it.
I don't, I think...
I think that would be the most appropriate thing, since the, since it's on the table.
Yeah, well, that's absolutely your prerogative, if you'd like people to vote on it, so why don't we...
I think you should all vote against it.
So we'll call the vote? All those are...
Well, can I...
Go ahead.
So, I guess when I, what I really want to stay out of, and the reason I'm not going to vote for it, is when I looked at the election, and I talked to my kids about this, too, you have your party, your party. Where's our party? Where's the one that's actually doing something for all Americans? We don't have that. That's why this was so dysfunctional. And so when we say alarmed that the rhetoric of the national election has inspired hate groups, we're obviously referring to one party, which I understand that, I've been watching the press. But at the end of the day, this country has a major problem, which is we have a party for half the population, we have a party for the other half of the population. We do not have a party that's actually doing what it needs to do to get all Americans together. It's not happening. And it's become a joke. We look ridiculous to other countries, and I, and I really am disgusted by the whole thing, and I just don't want to go down this road where I become part of it. I don't agree with what happened, this go-around. I think it was a disgusting display of politics and democracy, really. And at the end of the day, I hope that next election, it doesn't go this way, I hope that the parties both understand that you can't just, you know, look at half the population and say, well, I'm going to serve them no matter what. It can't be that way, and I, and I hope it isn't that way next time. If the parties have learned anything from this election, it should be exactly that, because you end up, you know, we have really somebody that's really neither party, and it's because a large part of the country rejected the whole idea that either party was doing anything for them. And that's that, and I hope it changes for next time, but right now, I'm just, I can't vote for it for all the reasons I've stated.
And I guess I want to make it clear that, Michael, I'm not voting against the spirit in this, I'm just, I think, saying, I think, you know, I love that we are not, we don't have to be involved in any, everything political, and I think that the tangible ways that we can contribute to making sure that our students aren't subjected to hate groups and, and some of the things that you mentioned in here. I think we have policies to make sure that there isn't discrimination happening in our schools, and I love suggestions where we can help, you know, by increasing student choice or anything like that, I'd rather focus on that than the statement.
I'm going to vote for it, Michael.
Thank you.
I think it's an affirmation of our basic drift as a committee. I think the town of Long Meadow showed by its vote, 5,000 to 3,000, overwhelming support for one particular party. I don't think this is a partisan issue, I think it's a meta-politics issue. Do you support the ideals of the United States of America? Not the Democratic Party or the Republican Party, as expressed by their current nominees, but do you support the basic understanding of what the Constitution and the Bill of Rights is all about? And, and right now, I think that's in danger. It's in danger up at Hampshire College, where a bunch of people are screaming and yelling at a private college for not displaying their flag. I mean, when's the next time we're going to come around now and say, okay, Fitzgerald, where's your flag? We decided it should go up today. That's what we're starting to look at, and we're going down a slippery slope here. Okay, so I'm not connecting Long Meadow with Hampshire College, but there's a dynamic here, where I think a number of people should stand up and say, I affirm my same basic principles I had before the election, they're still in place.
But you can do that without referring to the election. I mean, I mean, that's really the, you know...
Sure.
I agree with everything in here as far as the, you know, you shouldn't discriminate, that everybody should be treated equally, I mean, all of that is...
I'm sure you do. I don't question that.
I would never, ever think any, anything but that, but I just am so unhappy with the way things went this time. I want, I think we really need to talk about how we fix this going forward, but I don't think the committee should be doing it. I think as a community and as a nation, we need to, but this is not the forum to do it. it.
I'm not, first, just, just for the record, I'm not offering this in a partisan sense and I'm not offering it because somebody won the presidency and somebody didn't. I'm offering it because we had a student tell their teacher they were afraid that their grandmother wasn't going to be able to come back from Pakistan. I offered it because someone felt the need to draw swastikas on Mount Tom and on the back of a dumpster in Holyoke. Because someone felt the need to send a threatening letter to the mayor of Holyoke because of his sexual orientation. Those are the reasons it's important that I think we adopt an affirmation that we let our students know this is a safe space. It's nothing to do with all the different things that we can do and we should do. We should create more seats, we should do a lot more than just that. But the bottom line is that, you know, we, we're leaders, people look to us for leadership and we can act and we can say things and we should do both of those things, you know? But it has, it has very little to do with one person winning and one person losing, it has more to do with the fact that as a Jewish American in this country, someone is right, is drawing symbols of the Nazi party too close to my home.
I mean, Michael, my, so my kids, their grandmother's from Italy and is here on a green card and they came to me the next morning and said the same thing. So I completely get that, but the sentence about the rhetoric in the national election and that type of thing, that's the, that's the political side of it. I agree with you completely. They were scared, they thought it was going to be, you know, their grandmother's going to be sent back to Italy and everything else, but I think as parents and as community members, we need to tell them that's not the case, you know, that we would fight for that never to happen. And there's ways to do that, I just don't think that this is, I don't think it's going to be effective to deal with that issue. I think we need to deal with it, but not this way.
I'm just thinking, is there a way that we might want to draft something in a different format? So it's not necessarily a resolution, but along the lines of what Stephanie was suggesting, where we have a statement of, you know, an open and affirming statement that's part of our mission statement, that's part of our policy book, that, you know, that goes, that's somewhere official, that states all of the, all of the things that you describe in the resolution, but in that format, so that we're really declaring our school system open and, open and affirming and denouncing this sort of behavior, but more along the lines of what Stephanie was saying. Not necessarily, not necessarily part of our mission statement, but incorporating it somehow in the student handbooks.
I, I like the, the way you worded that this is a safe place. We keep it simple like that and make that our focus to our students, like every day when you come to school, we want you to know that this is a safe place and that we are dedicated to delivering that for you. I feel like if, if we're saying that, that's saying all of this, but in a language that might mean more to the kids.
I definitely, I think it would be great to have something. I think that this, because the mentioning of the election is in it, it does feel, and it does have a very political vibe to it. The sentiment behind it though, with respect to what do we stand for, I, I would love to see somewhere. Whether it's a mission statement, whether it's in the handbook, whether it's, I think that's, that's something that we should think about putting somewhere.
I agree.
Because that is the driving, for me, that's the driving force behind how we look at policy, how we look at things. I'd like to take another look at what do we have on the books in terms of hateful acts? What do we do, and I know in policy we're looking at communication and social media, what do you do when you're on one of those chats outside of the classroom and something hateful is said that's in any sort of category, but hateful towards another student and it carries over into the school? How are we addressing specific hate acts? We need to look at that. I think there's a lot we need to do and I think by having a statement somewhere that will guide that and really make it known that we are looking at those things and we take these things seriously and we value everyone, I would like to look at those things. I know they've occurred on social media. There have been, and it is a question of how do you handle it? And how do you handle the kids who are on those threads? And how do you handle the kid who says it but didn't really necessarily maybe know what he was saying or maybe he did? Or, you know, these are all things I think we do need to think about, how they're handled in light of this. So for me, the statement is, is of value and I think it's just placement and then more of what we stand for in general versus talking about why we're making the statement now. This is something we've stood for the entire time, I would hope so.
Right.
And, and this is how we look at things, but I think it's worthwhile having it somewhere.
So what, what I'm really hearing people say is that we're not saying no to any of the ideas, that we fully endorse the ideas that have been expressed, but what we aren't comfortable with is the vehicle and the co-mingling with the, the election. It's really just not a comfortable place as a committee and not where we want to be.
And I think, Michelle, what would be interesting is to know, the students, I put you on the spot. But I would be interested, I mean, I know at the elementary level what I heard from my kids about how it went after the election and everything else, what I'd be curious to know is, you know, if there were things that happened before, after, or long before, if the student body has things that they think could be addressed better as far as equality, I mean, I know, like you told us how when new kids come in, you have a table and you, you actually welcome them, which has got to be extremely hard coming to high school and a new school, so I think that's fantastic. But there's probably other things that maybe we could do as well to be better at making sure everybody feels included. And, not today, but I mean, it's some, one of our future meetings, that might be helpful that, to hear from you, kind of what, what things could we do better in that regard to make sure everybody does feel that they're included? Because you hate to hear those stories when the, when the kid with autism has never been to a play date or never been to a birthday party.
Yeah.
Like, those, those are horrible. So how do we address those? And if the students have any idea about that, I'd love to hear that too.
I'll bring it up at the next S-Back meeting, it's toward the end of this month, but I'll let you guys know what the other student council members have to say about it.
That'd be great.
You read my mind, I was thinking the same thing, you're asking, Michelle.
Yeah.
We woke you up, I know. Just kidding. Okay, any, any other comments? All those in favor? Opposed? And abstaining? Okay. I believe we've come to the end of our agenda, but I want to-
We have one more item.
Yeah, okay, thanks, John. Skipping things here. Suggestions for future agenda items was last on our agenda.
What about NSBA?
Oh! I'm looking at, I'm sorry, I'm looking at my, my old draft. Can I grab it? Oh, okay, Stephanie, I didn't, I didn't see this, I'm sorry. So, Diane, what do we need to do?
Is it a funding issue? Something about that first?
Sure, sure.
I had sent that email out benignly, just really asking if anyone had attended that. I don't, I have not heard anything. I am planning on, and I believe I will be there at the, going to the Equity Symposium, I think that's of great value, I'm very interested in looking at how we can positively impact educational outcomes for economically disadvantaged students as well as academically, kids with academic challenges. So that is of interest to me. I had not considered the school committee paying for that. My question was, had anyone ever attended the Advocacy Institute? I can't make heads or tails of whether that's something, I don't think that's something that I'm interested in attending.
Okay.
I was just curious as to whether anyone had. I'm not looking, it looks like it's, it's working with political figures on a national level, I'm not really, I couldn't figure out if there was anything else implied in there that I thought would be useful. The worksheet that they have you fill out prior to ask questions are specific to your district and how funding affects your district and concerns you have. Maybe if I hear more after this year, I, that might be something that would be of interest. I think it's important for us to have that discussion, maybe more on a state level, I don't know. There wasn't, I was wondering what information people had on the Advocacy Institute. Equity Symposium is something I'm particularly interested in and that the Advocacy Institute follows that, so I didn't know if I was going to be around.
Are you planning on going? And, and are you paying for it yourself?
I was, I was-
Shouldn't that be something we pay for?
So I didn't know how that works. I was going to just go, but if it's something that the school committee has money for or if, that's a discussion I, I wasn't necessarily bringing up.
What is the cost, what, do you know?
I think the Equity Symposium is like 200, the Advocacy, 225. The Advocacy Institute is something with a heavy, much heftier price tag on, but the Equity Symposium-
Well, can I ask you this?
Yeah.
Seriously. Is this something that you see helping benefiting the school committee's service to the town?
I-
And maybe talk a little bit about that?
It's hard for me to say since I don't know anyone who's gone to it. What I can say is that from my perspective, hearing other people's perspectives of the challenges that they face within their school, how they've addressed it, different challenges that maybe are going on here that we're not aware of, ways that we can reach out to more students, that's really what I'm looking for. And that's why it was of interest to me. I constantly find it, I, I, I'm always asking for information from other people who have experience in outside districts and thinking about what we're doing here, what they're doing there, what challenges they face. And I work in another district and I find the information invaluable and how we, different ways of approaching things and different challenges we have. And so this was one where a bunch of people get together and they talk about kids with different academic and challenges as well as economic. So, I can't say, I don't know anyone who's attended it, I don't know necessarily what to, to expect except-
Certainly, certainly at the NSBA, the School Board Association, I'm sure it's a high-quality program, so.
It seemed, yeah. So it's really, you know, there's a, if they have the website and it talks about how it's sponsored by the National School Boards Association, National Caucus of American Indian Alaska Native School Board, Council of Urban Boards of Education, National Black Council, National Hispanic Council, it's focusing on building the capacity, knowledge and skills of school board members around issues of access, equity and diversity in public education. They talk about, they examine and discuss strategies, current trends, research, best practices that are positively impacting the educational outcomes of academically and economically disadvantaged students in traditional K through 12 public settings. I don't know anyone who's gone, it was something that was of interest to me.
Are we a member of the NSBA?
Not to my knowledge.
Have you ever gone to one of these meetings?
Not to NSBA, no. The, that would be more appropriate for school committee members, but I'm sure it's a high-quality event, you know, I would imagine and certainly it connects with your prior discussion around, we can ensure that we're an inclusive and equitable district.
Right.
So do you need a motion? You want to make a motion?
I don't know. I mean, I can look into, I haven't made a final-
Let's let Tom weigh in.
Diane mentioned it to me that you were, you had mentioned interest in going to a national conference. So we don't have a line item in the budget that would cover the cost. Normally when a member travels, it's not just the registration fee, it's usually the airfare and hotel that the district reimburses for. So with that in mind, it most certainly would have been more than the normal $200 or $300 that a member would incur for a conference. So I said, well, we should probably bring it to the committee and let them decide if they want to offer to reimburse you for the cost, what I thought was the, the other one, but if you have a different, an Equity Symposium that you would be interested in going to, I think it's just up getting the committee to authorize the funding.
Yeah, and I don't know how much I, how comfortable I feel about you covering travel. If anything, I would just look at the cost of the tuition. And I hadn't really, I hadn't really, it was really a benign question of whether anyone knew, anyone went.
So why don't we end this discussion and if you need us to approve something, we can put it on our next agenda?
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, let's do.
All right. So we, do we have any suggestions for agenda items tonight? I think we covered that a little bit earlier in the meeting, but please contact me if you have any. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So move, second.
All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Just kidding. Thank you.